Good evening and thanks everyone for coming out this evening. I'm going to ask Ms. Hallie to open us with the prayer our chaplain is out tonight.
From the early rising of the sun this morning to the setting thereof, you have been with us. For all those in the sound of my voice this evening, may God put a special blessing around you. Help us in this meeting is even to be guided not by us, but all our understanding of you that we will make the right decisions for everybody and all the students and parents and grandparents and those who are affected in Kershaw County by COVID-19. For those Lord who may be suffering Lord with COVID-19 this evening as a special blessing on them and heavenly Father, may be ever guided by the principles that you have said before us. All these blessings we ask in our holy and precious name and we count it all done. Amen.
Called the order Kershaw County School Board of Trustees August 18, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? Properly motion by Mr. McDonald's and second by Mr. Eric. Is there any discussion? Hearing any, none? All was a favor, let me know my ratio right hand. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda provenly meeting minutes for August 4th, 20, August 4th, 2020? Properly motion by Mr. Blackman, second by Mr. Rat. All those in favor, let me know my ratio right hand. That's unanimous. We want to, we have with us G. Wester with the Chronicle Independent, Bill Roach at the Kershaw County Current, Mayor of Bethune and others from the community. We're thankful that you're here this evening. This time I'm going to give to Dr. Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's always fun when you have an opportunity to recognize one of your own and tonight we are especially excited to recognize Dr. Smith, who will be receiving the South Carolina School Board Association Board, Boardsmanship Institute recognition for reaching level four. There are six levels that board members can achieve and they can earn points for participating in statewide conferences and onsite training in their district. And so it's very important for board members to understand that these are valuable opportunities to learn and grow as boardsmen and boardswomen. And it's obviously good for me when y'all do that. So join me in congratulating Dr. Smith on earning level four, level six.
This time is brings, brings us to our public forum. We have two that have signed up tonight. Our first speaker is Ellen Kee, 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 Kepler from Bethune Elementary School. If you comment this time, the board will hear what you have to discuss. It's not a time where we provide a response and it's limited to a five minute time period.
Thank you so much for letting me come here and speak. My name is Ellen Keever and I live here in Camden, South Carolina. However, I was saddened and I hope this is not the case and I'm hoping I'm not getting ahead of myself to hear that you are closing Bethune Elementary now because there's not enough percentage of students. If that is the case, my question is, how many percentage of students do y'all have enrolled at Bethune Elementary? What is the percentage that is going back? Also the same for Mount Piscata Elementary, how many, what is the number of students that you have enrolled and what is the percentage going back as well as Bear and DeKalb, the three schools that y'all have proposed to close in the referendum that y'all, well, I say y'all, the certain politicians promised to keep the elementary school open at Bethune. If you vote for it, we will not close your school. However, that was a lie. And unfortunately, it's sad to see kids that will be bus two hours. I have a special needs son. And I just came out and when I'm pulling out of my driveway in Cool Springs, of course he goes to Camden Elementary. At 5:15 in the morning, they go to the gym, I'm seeing a special needs bus go by my driveway. They are on the bus from hour and a half, two hours. The only red work is that special needs kids, they can't speak. They, you know, my son is not taught any training. My whole point is, is that when you close Bethune Elementary, you're having kids, if you know the area that are bused from Turkey Creek, that is a long ride. That is two hours going on the bus. And I personally, you know, as a taxpayer citizen, do not think such rights for the kids. My other question is that what is the percentage with the boon having the, it used to be called a swamen plant use it was the original, the Kendall plant, we're having a Kendall plant there and also Cal Maine. The tax base for, you know, for Bethune. What is the tax base for North Central? I think they have Precious Farm and they also have Kenfor, which is agriculture, which is a lower tax base. What is the tax base for all the citizens of the boon and in the North Central area, but individually, how much do they, do they pay into the taxes and are they getting representative by y'all for, you know, for the citizens, for the students, for the children of Kershaw County? My question is, how much does it cost to run each individual school for the principal to the janitor to not only how much you plan, pay employees, but also how much it costs to run the school? Not only Bethune Elementary, I'm talking about all the schools. We pay a lot of taxes. Seventy-five percent of our taxes goes to the school district. You know, the way Lubaugh and Elgin has grown with a friend who works at V H, they've got 500 houses that are going up in Lubaugh and Elgin, you know? Thank goodness, you know, we can only pass a referendum every 15 years. You know, we're, they're gonna need a new elementary, middle school, but my whole point in saying this is during the time of a COVID pandemic, when the one thing that students look forward to is going to school and I hope the rumor is not true and I know how rumors are in Kershaw County, that y'all plan on closing the school. That is not fair. I hope I'm not getting ahead of myself because I know I'm sure y'all haven't addressed it, but I would like to know if that's the case and only a certain amount are going fifty-fifty. Then what is that amount? What is that amount for Mount Piscata? What is that amount for Bear and DeKalb for the rest of the schools? I know we're in a time, you know, pandemic that we've never been in before. And, but we need to do what is right. Kershaw County, how many people in here graduating from North Central? Dr. James said, did you graduate from North Central?
Yes.
Kim Horton Durant, did you graduate from North Central? Fine Blackman, you live in Westfield. So we have three representatives, but where, why haven't y'all ever represented the food? You know, the way my Bible says is that it doesn't matter who our parents are, it doesn't matter where we grew up in the county. God made us all, but y'all are always treating the food like they're the redhead stepchild. They pay taxes just like everybody else. You know, they have feelings too, but you promise and you promise and you promise and every time you promise, you, it gets taken away from them. Well, tonight and today is enough. I hope that you will look in your heart, even as Christians, because God has heard of us playing church. He wants us to be the church. You know, he wants us to be the church. And what I'm saying in this, I'm not a preacher, but what I'm saying in this is that please in your heart, if you're convicted of anything, please do what is right. You know, please do what is right for the students and for the, of our Kershaw County, please do what's right for the students of Bethune Elementary. You know, for so long it's been divided. It's time that we come united. Yes, it's been 75 years that for some other reason, you said it right, to bury the hatch. But we can't bury the hatch if you are always picking on the food in Kershaw County. It's time that we unite. And whatever, I'm not sure how much that we owe in taxpayers when it comes to every building in Kershaw County, every school in Kershaw County since the nineties has been replaced. I've never heard of that anywhere, you know? Every single school in Kershaw County, all the schools in Camden are brand new. The schools of Lubaugh, Elgin are brand new. It says in the Bible, don't take my word for it. And Proverbs 22:7, "The rich will over the poor and the barter is slay to the lender." Enough is enough. Please vote with your conscience and please do what is right. Thank you.
We have Mr. John Heffman, that's a male, a male, yeah, okay, county council.
Good evening. I'm gonna talk really fast because last time I, I didn't get the chance to say everything I wanted to say. So I want to speak real fast. First of all, good afternoon and this is not personal. As I told you, I love you all and I wish I could go around and call you individually because God may call me home tonight and I am not going to hell for nothing. Ms. Hallie, I love you. I love that prayer. I, I, I feel, felt that. But last time I echoed on the chairman's words, a cloud of witness. And we all go out to stand. Ellen did a great job, but what I want to talk about is broken promises. And this COVID, I can't believe we're in here talking about this. And, and again, I, I hope we're speaking out of turn, but we heard this on the rumor mill and hopefully it's rumored because I would love to think that we as professionals would have talked and contacted each other if this was true. But six months ago, we were told two years. And you can't punish someone on a choice that was given by the school district. You had three choices and when you choose a choice, you, you can't be punished. That, that is definitely wrong. And, and you, again, you have to have communication with that. And the percentage, as she said, I would love to know the percentage throughout the county, not just Bethune. And we have been lied to over and over again. You know, during this pandemic, we said wouldn't cut water off, we wouldn't cut power off. But how about if the power company says, oh, your power's going off? You were lied to. How would you feel? The northern end of the county is very different from the southern end of the county. It's always been like that and it probably will always be like that rule versus a developing area. And if your child lived there and had to ride the bus and you would understand what's that, what's that is like. Our money is just as good as everybody else and the town of Bethune and the Bethune community, it, it's going to continue to die if we don't have something. And we're trying to do things in the food to continue to, to do that. Separate and we're still equal. I've talked about that movie Separate but Equal and hopefully you've read it. And the northern end is definitely different. And if you want to be separate as, as equal, then close all the schools in the southern end of the county, starting at, at, near the hotspot coming this way and make one high school, one elementary and middle school, et cetera, then you would be equal. If you did that, then that would be bringing equality. When this school board, some of you probably weren't members, talked about equality and the equalization plan. To me, if you identify that things were not equal, then you should have started out with the older areas instead of the newer areas. Broken promises, we were promised with Bethune High School was closed that night in the nineties at Lubaugh, Elgin High School, that the middle school would come to Bethune. We would have a speed bus to take our kids to North Central. All of that changed, the attendance lines when North Central High School was originally built, a 346. Dr. Morgan in this building with some of the people in this room, I'm not going to call their names, met with myself and other council members and promised us if we got our attendance up, he would change our attendance lines. Voters approved a million dollars to go to Bethune. Didn't happen. That's democracy. When, when a choice is given, you can't take a choice back. And so you can't say, well, this is one option today, tomorrow, not good. And again, how would you feel? So if you want to do equality to make everything equal, there's a lot of things that has to happen and those are broken promises. July 2014, former board member, Mr. Jim Smith told the Bethune citizens in a board meeting, stand up and fight against consolidation. September 2015, councilman with him talked about a cloud over our head for a long time, that we need the uncertainty to be gone. August 2019, there was a tie, 4-4 deadlock in here. And to me, when something doesn't pass, you go to the next option on the table. You went backwards. You never brought up the other plans to vote on. Chronicle Independent, please look into these broken promises. You have more research. And again, I love you all. It is not personal, but I urge you to fight for anything that you ever believe in in your life with all your heart. That's something that my former teachers and grandparents taught me. No disrespect and if it came out as disrespect, I don't mean it to be disrespect. Thank you for, for the opportunity.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum. Oh, business, new business. We have policy review for the second reading, Ms. Burr.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Robbins. Before you have for your vote tonight, the second half of policy, section G, and these are your personnel, human resource policies. As a reminder, you have contracted with the South Carolina School Boards Association to do a review of our entire policy manual. And so for section G, you've already approved the first half. This is a very extensive section. And so we brought it to you in two different versions. And our assistant superintendent for human resources, Dr. Connie Graham, who's in the audience tonight, has helped work on this and review these policies. These are coming to you from the School Boards Association and she and I have worked and made sure that they reflect our current practices and those things that Kershaw County has represented and so have them to you tonight. Willing able to answer any questions you might have. Dr. Graham also would be able to do the same. Dr. Graham also would be able to do the same.
This is the second reading of policy G we have had thus for a while. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Bird or Dr. Graham?
Yeah, just have one. Nothing's changed from what you presented last time, right? It's the exact same packet of everything? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion that we adopt policy G? It was properly motioned. I'm not sure who made that motion. Dr. Coffey, and second by Mr. McDonald's. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let me know by raising your right hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. We have next on our agenda, safety manual. And that's definitely bowling.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Robbins, board members. I just wanted to come to you tonight to, number one, thank you for last July having the confidence in me to hire me on as your safety and security coordinator and make Kershaw County a better better place for our children. I think we've done that in this first year. Look up on your board, 2018 to 21, 21, one of your key safety and security things are a comprehensive safety protocol for our response in any emergencies. And sadly, this year, we had to kind of fly on our heels with North Central and the tornado. And then we have continued since January following on with coronavirus. I'm here tonight to tell you all that I have completed my number one priority for this year, and that is writing a emergency response manual for Kershaw County School District. When I took over last year, the previous manuals were 38, 40 pages. I'm at 129 right now. And I remind you that this is going to be a living document. Because every time I consider one emergency or one protective action, something else comes to mind. So this manual will be reviewed every year and signed off and approved by Dr. Robbins. I followed the FEMA design. It addresses National Institute or National Incident Response Management System. It addresses our mutual aid throughout the county, not only with our governmental agencies, but non-governmental agencies. And it also covers the I love you guys foundation, which the standard response protocol and standardized reunification model that we follow here in the district. Promise you that's not COVID. It is organized by the standard phases, mitigation, protection, prevention, preparedness and response. And within response, I've tried to address many of the specific hazards, taking an all hazards approach, identifying assessment of the emergency, whether it be at the district or the school level, as well as communications, both internal, external, and through our public information, Director Ms. Bird, as well as other agencies. It identifies protective actions, whether it be the actions that I love you guys puts into place through their system, or the actions that the superintendent makes for counseling schools, early dismissal, or anything else. It looks at situational emergencies. As I started this, I I said before, the previous manual was 38, 40 pages. I ended up with a six-page table of contents. Because not only do we have to look at situational emergencies, common one is active shooter or a fire, or here tornadoes. What about civil disturbances, environmental, roof collapse, North Central? Can't ever say it's not gonna happen. We have to address address it. We have to plan for it, and we have to be prepared for it. Also, medical, not just AEDs, not just EpiPins, but foodborne illnesses. There there's a lot of things that we have to consider in our planning. And I think I've tried to touch on a pretty comprehensive list of these things, as well as transportation. Because those kids are in our care from the time we pick them up to the time we get them home. So given that, like I said, I just wanted you to be aware that it is done. I am not an author. I am not a journalist. I do not have the best writing skills. So the format is being reviewed by some of those that are more capable. And I'm sure at some point, once Dr. Dr. Robbins finalizes it and signs off, it'll be there for y'all's review. But I do want you to know that one of your primary objectives has been that.
You know, and I'd just like to piggyback. It's it's evolving, ever evolving. And so we almost were starting from scratch. But we want to put the model plan together for other partners, other school districts in the state to look to. And so our partnership with our law enforcement officials has been amazing. And it really is going to help us in this process. So thanks, Doug, for your work on this.
Doug, just a quick question for you, for for both of you. What's the implementation process of taking that policy and and getting, I guess, into the leaders in the schools to kind of understand it and kind of give us a timetable of what that implementation would be?
That that will probably go on throughout this year. Once I have the approval from Dr. Robbins, this is the district plan. This identifies our district emergency operations team so we can send supporting staff and resources to our schools if it exceeds the ability for that principal. But the principals then need to write an individual building plan. Because I can write an evacuation plan, whether it be onsite or offsite, going to a church, going to a local business that's close by. But every one of those are different based on geography. Every one of those are different based on traffic patterns. So I will be working with the principals. It's pretty much baseline, follow the script of what we have. And the I love you guys standardized response protocol really makes a lot of that a lot easier. Because the actions are pretty much the same. You're either gonna go into a lockout, lockdown, shelter, or evacuate. You just have to think and apply the circumstances to your geographical environment to how you're gonna do that. But I'll be helping them. And then each one of those school building plans will be nested within the district plan. So it's gonna be one comprehensive, you have the continuity. It's not everybody doing their own thing.
So Doug, are we farther enough along along the way in the event that we had a tornado? What would that look like now?
I think it would look like it looked like in January when North Central was torn down. We were very fortunate that kids were not involved and that we didn't have the injuries. I I spoke many times with Dr. Robbins. When I mentioned mitigation, prevention, preparedness and response and recovery, luckily, we fell into the recovery phase of that from the very beginning. Because the response was really done by the first responders in the middle of the night. There were no injuries, no casualties, thank God, that we had to deal with. But the emergency manual will address all of those.
So we'll have some dry runs for those.
Oh, yes, sir. And in the manual, I try to I try to stay teacher friendly or educator friendly. They're proactive actions, proactive action plans for all your different emergencies.
Part of his responsibility will be to oversee each site to make sure they're conducting their their training and their evacuation plans so that we're up to speed. You know, because we're gonna have a constant rollover of staff throughout the county in our district, and everybody needs to be on the same page. And that's part of his job description.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to yield to this superintendent for the updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And and thanks, Doug, for your work on that. That's just part of and almost been, you know, put into hyperspeed with the pandemic to get this plan in place. But, you know, I just want to share with the board that I continue to express to our staff the need to be nimble and flexible in this volatile environment. Our response protocols are being modified daily as guidance from DHEC continues to evolve and emerge. And I'm on conference calls. And so I I will pull the response protocol down and make whatever tweaks to it. And Julie relinks it to our website so it's as current as possible. Our staff's working hard every day to get prepared for the first day of school, which is on September 8. But we actually have many of our teachers back on campus for the new leap week on August 24, where they're gonna be providing pre-assessments to students. But I I will tell you from the conference calls, the feedback I'm receiving from the governor's press conference at Watery Elementary School, and some of the comments that he and his team made to us and and our leadership team, that I think we're leading the way in preparing and setting the bar for other districts in the state on how to try to respond into something that we've never planned for. And and I think we're doing as good a job as any and as good a job with the resources we have. I had a teleconference today with physicians from DHEC that was designed to assist us with planning for such things as face mask policies, because some districts don't have those yet. What are you doing with isolation rooms? And what do you do when you have symptomatic students and staff members in your building? And and what's the difference between a quarantine and isolation? The one thing that I noted when they shared samples with us, I've had different members of of my cabinet working on this stuff, including Mr. Hopkins. And our plans are aligned with state guidance from DHEC. And so and they're up to date and they're current. So I feel really good about that. You know, and again, flexible, nimble, and being prepared to adjust to whatever's thrown at us. I wanted to show you, and you know what our response protocol is, but there are a few things that we have amended since our last meeting. And I wanted to show those with you. We now have our fever system up and operational. We used it with the governor's team when he came to Watery Elementary School. It was really funny. He walked in and and asked about the temp check. And Deputy Bowling said, Governor, you were checked. And he said, no, no, I wasn't. Yes, Governor, you were. And we took him back out and we demonstrated the fever system with him. He took the business card of the the engineer with the Fever Company and is looking at doing something statewide. So I thought it would be interesting. Our Watery fourth grade team and a few of their students helped us film a video. If you haven't seen it, Kerry's gonna play it right now. And you can kind of see what will happen, how we will screen students when they come into the building, visitors when they come in the building, and our staff, and what we'll do if they have an elevated temperature and how we'll use our isolation room. It is important to note that there will be no visitors, at least for the first four and a half weeks in our buildings, unless it's a prearranged appointment. We have to be able to control the environment. If we can't control the environment, then we're really exposing ourselves. And we end up like that school district up in Georgia. And we just don't want to do that. So we have to mitigate risk at every opportunity we can. So Kerry, can you play the video? Nope, gotta go back, Kerry. Click on the arrow in the middle. Here you can see it's looking at the infrared temperature of the students coming in. And it uses artificial intelligence for core body temperatures. So that just gives you an idea how that'll work. The one thing that I noted when we made this video, elementary teachers love to touch their kids. And so we're really gonna have to do a good job of saying, you gotta keep your your hands off and your distance. Because if that child was sick, you know, that that individual could have contaminated themselves. And so again, trying to mitigate risk. But the fever system is nice as a screening tool for us because you can sit back there and you can watch the screen. And it'll let you know if somebody has an elevated temperature. When they go into the isolation room, then our nurse can do a full evaluation to see if it was a true positive. We can actually route the screen to a larger screen in our front offices so that our secretary of staff and people can sit and observe. Tim has set up training for all of us, every single one of us, to go through the train to understand how to use the system. It's really easy to use. It's user friendly. You you have to set it every morning when you come in and calibrate it. And so like in our building, we have two people that we know come really early, Ms. Troy, Dr. Graham. And so they are our calibration people for the fever system here at the district office. And there'll be somebody identified at each school to be able to do that. So any questions about the fever system before I go to the next topic? It's a really, it's it's robust. It's it's a really nice system. So very pleased we're gonna have that. The next piece I wanted to share with the board tonight was transportation. So we are just about, we we're as up to date with numbers as possible. Our buses are being, the guideline is to only fill them to 50% capacity. I've shared this with you a little bit before. But there's a couple of changes that I wanted to note to you. The first two seats will be used as isolation seats. In the event that a child tries to get on the bus with a temperature, there's a lot of times that by the time of the morning when they're getting on the bus, the parent may have left for work. And we're not gonna send the child back into to the home without any parental guidance there for him. So we'll bring him to the school and put him in one of our isolation rooms to be evaluated by our school nurse. We are hiring, we've not completely filled all the positions, but bus assistance for each one of our buses. We don't want the school bus driver to try to do that. So we'll have a bus assistant who will get off the bus and use the the non-contact thermometers that we have to check the temperature of each student. We can exceed 50% if it is a sibling from the same household. They can sit in the seat together, and we don't have to to go every other seat. So right now, our strategy is such that we don't need to hire extra bus drivers. We can do this. In some locations, there is a chance that if kids start to come back and want to ride the bus, that we may have to double route. That goes back to the flexibility of our start-in times and our passing periods and those types of things for us to be nimble and be able to pivot. So I I feel really confident and comfortable where we are for transportation. Food service, food service is important to all of us because we want to make sure our kids are eating. Our food service plan includes meals being prepared for our virtual students. All five meals will be picked up on Thursday. And I have asked Misha to make sure that they were pickups at each individual site and not using our regional locations. So while we're in our our blended opening environment, there will be pickup options for virtual students at each school. The pickup times will vary from 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock because that way we will have the parent car rider traffic out of the parking lots, and the buses will be gone. We do not want them to come in the building. It'll be a drive-through, a type of environment where they'll drive through and they'll pick up their meals. In the event that we have to close down, we'll go to our state-approved regional distribution sites. This is similar to what we did this past spring. We have four locations that we utilized in regional sites. Blaney Elementary, North Central Middle School, Camden High School, and Lugoff Elementary School is the fourth one. We picked up a fourth one because the amount of participation was so high, and we needed another location. Meals will be prepared. Right now, we're looking at possibly having them picked up on either Monday or maybe Friday. But again, to manage the workload, it was good for them to pick up all five meals one day for the entire week. Pickup at those location, regional locations have to be approved by D, excuse me, DHEC. So those are the the reasons we use those locations. So we're we're in good shape and prepared. If any two entities have had preparation for this, it's definitely food service and transportation. So feel very good about our plan. Y'all good? Okay, next slide. And, you know, it it's been referenced. I've been tracking our numbers. We did the early survey to try to get an idea of what our parents were were looking at in terms of what they were gonna do with their children. In your slide deck, which has been shared with you, and you can print it, or I can have Wendy print you a copy if you want to see it. We've had about 94% of our students register. Based on what we were expecting to come back, you can see in the not available box, students we have on our rosters that have not returned or have not registered, which equals about 6%. We're still working on breaking down our teachers and sections. And this changes daily as more families register their students. I have directed our principals to make phone calls home to the children on their rosters that they haven't registered yet to try to get an indication on what choice they're gonna make, whether it's a face-to-face whether it's a face-to-face option or a virtual option. It's really important for us because, uh, we can have more students in a virtual teacher's classroom than we can have face-to-face, um, just based off of the fact that when we social distance inside a classroom, um, we can only get so many people in there and have the six feet of separation. Um, and you can see how big this room is and how quickly it fills up when you do six feet. So, um, those numbers are getting closer and closer, um, to, uh, where we think we'll be at 100% based, based on our numbers. And you can go through and you can look and see the percentage that are face-to-face, the percentage are virtual. Those that are outstanding, you can see it for every single building. Um, you can see that we have 10,035 students that have, um, registered totally. Uh, 47% of our, only 47% of our students are gonna come back in a face-to-face format. And 53% are coming back in a virtual format. I have a real strong suspicion that of the 6% or the 664 students that haven't registered, um, it's gonna be in a virtual format more than likely. Um, you know, there has been much talk and, um, I want you to know that no decision that we ever make in this district, um, comes easy, right? Because we have the responsibility to do what's very best for every single student and every single staff member in this district. And, um, I would challenge anybody to sit with our team and try to brainstorm ideas and ways to make the very best options possible to our community. And I think we, again, have done as well as most. But if you look at the Bethune numbers, we only have 52 students that have chosen the face-to-face option at Bethune Elementary School. Um, for the board's information, I met with every single staff member and talked about scenarios with them and what our options were. Um, the special ed teacher, special needs teacher, um, at Bethune, we discussed if we did not open the doors initially, what would we do with the special needs students? Um, she has only three that have requested to come back face-to-face. She only has five total on her caseload. And we looked at the, um, 4K preparation classroom at Wat- old ATech. It's got a playground, a fenced-in playground. She went out there and she said it was a beautiful site, be a great location. So those three students would go to the old ATech site, uh, for the short term if we closed this facility. The rest of the students, um, when I met with the teachers, I told them I would do my best to keep that, the Bethune students with the Bethune teachers. And we would move, excuse me, we'd move them to Midway. If you look at Midway, we only have 133 students that have chosen the face-to-face option at, um, Midway. So we've got plenty of space to spread out, uh, in that, in that facility. So, um, in the event things would improve and more students would return face-to-face, we're not mothballing the building, um, but we would, we would open the building back up for face-to-face instruction. Um, we initially looked at Mount Piska as well as an option. Uh, but there's enough students that are gonna be face-to-face there that we can provide them the related arts programming and some of the ancillary programs, um, that go along with the facility, um, a little easier. And it would be much farther to put them on a bus and try to move them to another facility. So, um, it's for that reason that, um, I have looked at and, and made the decision to not open that building as an operational strategy unless there are any objections from the board.
I have a huge objection. First of all, you know, we want our kids to go back and have some sense of normalcy. Everybody except for the same students, it looks like. And I'll, I'll tell you, our community, um, we all have taken a beating with, you know, with, um, with the referendum. It's all behind us. We know, and I'm not gonna get into all that. But we, um, but there's still, there's so much hurt in our community. There's some people that are happy that the new elementary school, but there's also, there is a large
We still feel like we've gotten, um, or getting, you know, we, we should still have our three schools left. And what's, what the referendum is, we passed. But anyway, and then on top of this, so it looks like, uh, it is what I'm looking at. It's 55 students is what it says here for registration. And that would be, I think it's at 48%. One of the higher, right along with the percentage of the elementary schools. And then you have Dobie's Mill, it's got, I can't see these numbers, or kind of, uh, Dobie's Mill or Stover, who only 231 kids are going face-to-face. It's a, it's a huge percentage have chosen to go virtual. And saying this because Bethune, almost half of their students have decided to come face-to-face. And I feel like, not just because it's the community that are present, I feel like we owe every one of those students who wanted to come face-to-face, they don't wanna go face-to-face to Midway. And I'm asking this board to please and our administration to please. Um, we heard the passion come from the two speakers. And those are just the two, cause I've been getting, uh, emails and some phone calls. And I'm just, whatever it would take to, and I, I hope it's not a monetary thing because these, these little 55 children that chose to go face-to-face are every bit as important as any of the other students. So I am asking to please let these 55 kids go back to their own sense of normalcy. Not to be uprooted. They're gonna be uprooted when they're new elementary schools, but this is important. This is just as important for these kids to have normalcy as any other kid in Kirshaw County.
One of the things I just wanted to look at these numbers, um, and, and unfortunately, not unfortunately, I actually agree with Kim a little bit. Every four and a half weeks, we're allowing the options to change. And so I, I feel like as I look at these numbers, that the plan that we have could constantly morph. In other words, we can't just be so rigid. We have to be flexible constantly because we might see a lot of movement taking place. We might have teachers who are teaching virtually who have to shift back to classroom, just classroom. And I think that, um, I can't remember the three phrases you used, nimble, jackedy nimble, so whatever. But, but, but I get what you're saying, but, but, but also, I, I agree with, you know, and I don't know what the, the cost factor is, but, cause Kim, there is a cost factor, okay? And, and I, I don't wanna put a cost just on a child's education. But in these crazy times, there is something to be said about kind of sticking with what you know, right? That familiarity of, of trying to get the kids back at school. And I don't know if it can be worked out, um, but, but I would be open to the idea. I would be.
So I, I would share with the board, this isn't anything to do with cost. It's about programming. And when you only have, and I say 52 because the three special needs students aren't in, uh, a normal classroom, it becomes very difficult for us to provide, uh, related arts, PE, counseling, um, the reading coach position. And then the other piece to that is, um, as you have adults moving from building to building and back and forth, then you are cross, somewhat cross-contaminating facilities. And we want to minimize that as much as possible. I totally understand about the normalcy, but I also know the kids are much more resilient than adults. And that's why when I met with the Midway teachers, I said, we would keep Bethune students with Midway teachers. You know, for them, it's their teacher, um, more so than it is about the classroom that they're in. Bethune, yeah, Bethune with Bethune at Midway, but located at Midway. And, um, you're right, it can morph back and forth and we have to be nimble and we have to be flexible. Um, but we also have to be able to provide, you know, opportunities for everybody. And resources are only come into play as a limitation to add. It's not that we're trying to save money, but we just don't have the ability to add expenses to be able to do that in this pandemic and in this environment. And quite honestly, the one thing that concerns me the most is we're down about 250 kids that we don't know where they're at. Um, if they have just completely dropped off and are not coming back to our schools at all, because we ended the year last year, 10,852 students. When you look at the cost per child, that's how much revenue that we're potentially going to lose in this environment. And so I'm being cautious, um, to try to protect our resources the best we can and provide programming the best we can. And 52, 55, but it's really 52 is such a struggle to be able to do that. And, um, and I have to not be emotional about it. And I've told this board more than once, I come from a community like Bethune, exactly like Bethune. And we've been through the same things in my home community. So, and, but I understand sitting in this seat, what my responsibility is.
Two questions. How are we handling an individual that registers initially virtually? And then finds out all of his buddies are going back to school, calls the school and wants to switch? Are we allowing, cause I know it's happening. Uh, wha- what is our response to that?
Yeah, so initially, um, we were allowing a little bit of that back and forth to occur. And then we got to a point where I told Dr. Taylor, I told our principals, if they've chosen face-to-face, they're face-to-face, if they've took, chosen virtual, it's virtual. Unless there is a change in the, um, circumstances with, uh, you have to quarantine or isolate or something in the family, then you're stuck with that decision for four and a half weeks. Then you can make a choice if you wanna move back and forth. That creates a little challenge for us, uh, because we have to be able to socially distance in these classrooms. Um, and so that is a little bit concerning, but we wanted to provide, I thought, I just felt like it was important to provide that flexibility to our community.
And, uh, and my second question, was there an after-school program at Bethune? And will there be one at Midway for those Bethune students?
Dr. Taylor, can you help me there? I'm not sure.
Mr. Hopkins, can you help me? We don't know.
Yeah.
No, there was not an accident.
Okay, no after-school program. There was not one at Bethune? Okay. Um, I will also say that the routing for the 52 students will be done appropriately so that there's not this extensive, um, bus ride. And again, you know that our bus routes are gonna be much quicker when you're only putting 50% capacity of students on the buses.
So I've got another question. Is, so is your decision based on because we don't have PE and art and music? Is that why, because those teachers have to float from school to school?
That's part of the decision or the reason. That's not the whole reason, but that is part of it, yes.
Well, that is a, you know, monetary, cause we could, I mean, I just, I feel like we're just turning our backs on this particular school. And I, you know, I feel like if there's any way possible that those kids can get back to their normalcy at their own school, we should do everything we can as a board to give that community that.
So we have, what, I said today is the 18th. We have about 20 days. Have your team considered, you know, if someone or a student changed their mind, you having a number of what may unpack and the thing that the team have worked on?
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we trying to lock people in right now. And that's what I shared with Mr. Eric. Um, and then they won't be able to change until the four and a half week mark. And hopefully we'd have a little heads up when they see how those things are working for them at home. Uh, again, like I said, we're not mothballing the school and, um, this isn't personal and I understand. But again, um, with 52 students, I, I really don't have any other choice. I think it's the right thing to do for the entire school district. I gotta look at this as a school district and not just Bethune. Um, and that's, that's why I came to that decision. Um, that's why I think it's in the best interest of our school district to move that way for right now. Um, it could change. It definitely could change. Uh, my bigger fear is, is we need to make sure that we're doing our part, uh, when we come back to school because, um, we are gonna have roughly 7,000 bodies under our roofs that are Kirshaw County residents that could impact the community spread. So, um, you know, if community spread increases, it may be a mute point. We may be all virtual here in the next several weeks anyway. So, um, again, that's why, that's why I've moved that direction. I understand the points that are being made. But again, I, I have to look in the mirror and say, am I doing what's in the best interest of the Kirshaw County school district? And that's what I've come up with.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, you said we're not mothballing the school and we do have the option to move kids back in there. Let's say at the end of four and a half weeks, more people choose face-to-face for a vaccine is developed, hopefully. You know, I don't expect it four and a half weeks, but let's say one is developed or, or the community spread goes way down and people wanna do more face-to-face. How long is it gonna take you to bring that school back on line?
Well, we won't, we won't turn any of the utilities off or we'll keep it running and clean and, um, maintained. And, you know, it'll be, and we're not gonna do anything with furniture. Um, it will be simply just moving kids from Midway back into Bethune Elementary Classroom.
We're talking a few days maybe.
If even that, I had a tornado take out a high school that we went straight into. Um, I, I'm pretty sure that we can plan and we can, and we can be prepared, um, to move right back in. No, no one is furloughed. We only have one food service employee, um, which we need food service employees anyway. Um, Mischa's down 20 people. Um, custodians are, you know, it's part of a, um, contract that we have. Or I met with all of our instructional assistants. Um, they'll all go into positions as well. And, and that's a unique situation, but, um, we're gonna use her in a couple of different avenues. You know, we do have half of our students that are virtual. So it's gonna be a challenge for our, our principals to, um, supervise teachers with face-to-face students, let alone teachers with virtual students. So, um, she's gonna work with, um, Dr. King and Marquita Barber. And we're gonna break that caseload up and allow her to go down that route, at least for now, knowing that we may open Bethune right back up. So, and then we've got a plan for her. So, but no one's, no one's losing a position.
And question. That 55, I guess you said 52 because of the special ed kids, is that correct? So my point is, we've got 55 kids that won't face off, or 52 kids or there about, one, one of the other, won't face-to-face. And we'll close the school down temporarily. And then we're gonna mask, I guess, accidents back to the school if it opens up. If they find this vaccine, you know, if they find, if it clears itself up, we got to go back. Or we're just gonna stay as we are. Because I think once you shut it down, I'm gonna be honest with you. Once it's closed and they find all the vaccines in the world, we ain't going back probably. If it's working where they've been moved to. So we can talk, you know, I don't like the idea of shuffling kids around personally. I just don't. That's just me. Now, once the new school is built, that will be home. But shuffling kids around right now bothers a little bit. And I, I, I gotta, with this information I've gathered tonight, I personally have to think about it. A little bit harder than reaching a decision right now. And I kinda see Kim's point, what she's saying about Bethune folks. And they eventually will have the new elementary school. And the Bethune folks will, basically, I know we've had some speak and I do sympathize in a lot of ways with schools, but, um, I'm just concerned if it's not money, this education, if it's, hey, gonna get a good education by moving to Midway, then they're gonna end up staying at Midway unless they all come back and we reopen it up. And then we moving kids again. But if you keep it moving a little bit, operational some, when if they have to go back, it's been operating. You see what I'm trying to get at? You shut down, you don't have a shutdown, you're getting your open backup, you gotta open back up. So that's, that's just something I have to think about myself personally.
Yeah, I understand what you're talking about, Coach. Um, you know, I will say this, and, um, Dr. Copley, I'm sure you're aware of this, but there is no hope for a vaccine before the spring. Um, and that's what the prevailing, uh, message from the Office of Surgeon General stating. Uh, I will tell you that the chances of us getting, um, back to that are slim. And again, that was part of the, uh, contingency planning. The concern, more concern is, is how is the community spread going to continue to increase? Uh, which is going to probably take more and more students out of our buildings. So, uh, again, we, we did think about all that. Um, we weighed all those, um, options. Um, you know, we're clearing ground for the new elementary. And if we don't open back up, the hope is, is they'll go right into their new elementary school next fall. Uh, but there, like I said, there's a chance that we may all be virtual, um, before Christmas anyway. So again, I'd rather try to do it now and offer the programming versus, you know, not be able to offer the programming.
So what you're saying?
Just push the button.
Yeah, but what you're saying, if the system works of what your recommendation is, if it works, then, uh, if we, we don't have a reasonable then if we, we don't have a reasonable reason to go back to Bethune because of some way that this virus is cleared up or whatever, or gets better, let me just say gets better. So we'll probably end up going to just find places for the virtual free people who want, the virtual students who want to come now face to face. We're going to find places for them to be to, we'll get the elementary school built now. Is that, is that, am I, am I right?
I I'm not sure I understood that.
Okay.
Restate that.
We got, we got, we got fifty-five we want to send, fifty-five, fifty-two, fifty-five, we're going to send to Midway. There about, okay? Okay, you 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 find a solution to the virus. There about, closing up, it gets better and better and better and better, better spike goes down. So now everybody wants to go face to face. So we open up Bethune again, so we shuffling the kids back to Bethune for the short period of time till the elementary school was built. So that's what we're doing here, is that's what your recommendation is.
That is my recommendation.
Okay, just want to make sure that we're moving kids back and forth that don't need to be moved is is troublesome to me, that's all I'm trying to say.
Can I say something, because I'm looking at the numbers, not that I'm suggesting this, I'm just saying that you have Dobie's Mill, I think in Stover, have the the lowest percentage of face to face. Have, did you consider maybe consolidating that group or that and letting that, one of those teachers of PE or art and come to Bethune? I mean, that's, I mean, to me, you could do that just as easily as you could. It just looks like our area is being
Yeah, and I mean, I, you got to look at, you got to look at numbers and not percentage. And Stover's a middle school and Dobie's Mill is really at capacity for an elementary school. This buys us breathing room. They're, they're a large facility to be able to socially distance students appropriately.
I got that wrong, elementary and middle school. But just, you know, this, because I've got an email, has any other considerations been
Yeah, and again, I was looking at numbers. That's what, you know, based on our teachers that we share amongst buildings, it's based on numbers. And the only other one, and you can't look at, I shared percentage with you so you have a feel for it. But when you look at raw numbers, the other thing that happened with Mount Piska. And but there's no easy way to try to do anything with the Mount Piska students because of where they're located. So we, we just stayed away from that one. And I, I could say cut line number seventy-five to give me an idea of what we would be able to still provide programming to. If it got below seventy-five, then that's when we were going to have to make a decision. So Mount Piska is at ninety students face to face. And and again, there's no place that I could send them. Again, we're looking at, we have to look at raw numbers for assigned teachers.
Hang on, I'm sorry, I'll ask one question. We've got these numbers. Last, who would you get these numbers, who were these numbers, what you sent us last week or week before last?
Well, these numbers in this slide, I, are from today.
Okay, well, the ones, I've seen the fifty-fifty, basically fifty.
Yeah.
So a decision has been made. You want to make a decision or make a call on what your recommendation is.